Good afternoon. The time is three o'clock and Edgewood Independent School District School Board will start a training of eight. And I do roll call. Mr. Jason Hernandez.
He'll be joining in a little bit.
He'll be joining us shortly. Mr. Joseph Geller.
Present.
Mr. Francis Pinoza.
Present.
Mr. Luis Gomez.
Present.
Mr. Michael Valdez.
Present.
Mr. Richard Chantoyu.
Here.
And I'm Martha Garcia, I'm present. Mr. Richard Chantoyu, the board of the Edgewood Independent School District School Board is present. That this meeting has been duly scheduled with us and we're about to begin our 2024 with a training of eight. Dr. Hernandez.
Thank you, Madam President. We are, we will start shortly. We are just waiting on our tech friends here to set us up. But in the meanwhile, if I can get everyone to please look at the, look at the Board of Trustees Operating Norm. Just want to remind everybody, we have our meetings today. I won't read these to you because we've gone over these over the course of many years now. And of course, in our different meetings, I do want to remind everybody to please make sure that we seek to first and foremost understand the conversations that are going on today, and then you'll see the rest there, keeping an open mind about the conversations that we're having today. Obviously, today, the idea for today's training is to, one, continue to build the work of the board. It is extremely important, it is extremely important, the work that you do as a team of seven, and of course, ultimately, the team of eight, because ultimately, it affects the students in our school district, and that affects our community here in Edgewood. So, as always, I will respectfully ask that you remember our board operating, our operating norms for our meeting today. Madam President, I do want to communicate before I move on that we don't have any, because it is on the script, we don't have any communication for citizens, so I just want to make sure that we do, that we do say that. So, I'm gonna go ahead and start our.
It's not. She wants to go get tech.
Okay, so she wants to go get tech. So, do we, does everybody have any of these?
No.
Okay. So, I guess I'm actually gonna get up here and tell jokes. So, I'll start with, well, as one part to get us off the ground with Happy New Year, yes, and Happy New Year, yes. So, by, by head count, everybody made it to the New Year, so thank God. So, let's just, let's just start with that. But a lot of the information I'm gonna go over in my part, I'll start with my part. My intended learning outcomes today are first and foremost to talk about a few things. This is board appreciation month. I think this is the first year we've actually done it in January, so I do want to acknowledge board appreciation month. I also want to acknowledge the intentional acts of service that you have done over the la, you have exemplified over the last six years as a collective board. And also, for those who are not here, because you've heard me say this over and over, whether a person is here or not, I do believe in lifting someone's name. Our other board members who also were part of this, this board of trustees, people like Mr. Payne, people like Edward Romelo, people like Dina Zerano, people like Stella Camacho, uh, yeah, I think that's everybody. People who served on this board diligently, years at a time, doing the amount of work that you're doing. And so, my conversation with you today is just to remind you where you started, first and foremost, as a board, the decisions you've made and how they tie to our strategic plan. In fact, after I speak, Mr. Luis is gonna come up and talk to us a little bit about the strategic plan. I'm gonna talk to you about the matter of choice, and all the choices you've made over the last five full years to bring schools of, uh, schools of innovation to our school district, as well as other things that are not so much a school of innovation, but things like the teacher incentive of them, which is work that's led by Mr. Chavez in that group that is gonna allow us to really, that is really gonna allow us to, quite frankly, just pay our teachers more. And so, I want to remind you of that work. And then, of course, all the work and all the courage that you've shown, I remember the year that I came, one of the things that Mr. Backhand, Mr. Soto was a part of, President, and I mentioned to you that this was not a one-year job. This was gonna be a job that was gonna take three to five at least, in terms of the work that we're doing. And that this was not the job of just the superintendent, it was the job of those who the superintendent has under his charge, which in my case is my executive team and everybody else, but also the board, the board and the work that the board does with the superintendent. And I can honestly tell you, more so that I've done this privately, because I think people say things sometimes publicly, for whatever reason, but I'll tell you that I've said this publicly about you guys, you've shown so much courage, even when you didn't maybe sometimes want to do things, like get up in public and talk about all the things that the district's done, whether it's in Galveston, whether it's in Fort Worth, all the different places that I know are playing in your head right now that I've asked you to present. You've not said no. Maybe you had some reservations, but if you did, I never thought. And so, I want to thank you for that. I want to thank each one of you for the acts of honesty, kindness that you've shown for school districts. Some of you barbecue, some of you show up at schools and you visit, of course, you know, you go through our board operating procedures, but there are so many things that you do that I think should and are going to be acknowledged, because I think that's important. And you don't just do the things that are fine either. One of the things that I think is important that I elevate, and it's in one of the slides I'll show you in a little bit, is you've also now gone through rethink and redesign and improvement. Now, I'm gonna say it again, we have had that conversation for five years. In fact, I can remember Mr. Chantoyu was the first one that brought it up at my interview and said, "We have got to start talking about the closing of schools." And that, that obviously, quite frankly, and again, I'm gonna be honest with you, that was a little bit of a, a mouthache line for me, but I do appreciate how you've shown courage to make decisions that maybe are not the most popular decisions, but they're decisions that needed to be made. And so, I do want to, I do want to acknowledge it. So, I'm gonna show that again to you here in a little bit. And that goes for all seven of you, regardless of where, where you have landed on different things, I think it's important to acknowledge that, because remember, our group is bigger than any, any one particular person, so I think that's extremely important. The last thing that I'm gonna discuss is, obviously, all the things that you do as a board, like all the volunteer time that you put into the school district, whether it's at a school board, whether it's at the workshops, whether it's at one-on-one meetings, because a lot of you do scheduled meetings, or when you come to board performance planning meetings, you have gone above and beyond what's expected of a board member in terms of, think about it, most, the law, the legally, the law just says, all you have, we have to do is provide you that packet of information three days before a board meeting. You guys have always been so amenable to come to workshops, when on one meetings, a few years ago, we started the board performance planning meetings. That's been a big thing. And so, again, I want to thank you for that investment in time, because I'm sure you've got a lot of other things that you, that are also pulling that ship. And I also want to acknowledge the fact that you've made our board meetings about the people in Edgewood, and I think that's extremely important. And so, this would be a whole lot better if this thing was connected, but I, not yet?
No, he would get another board.
Okay. And so, really, that's the gist of my presentation, I think, at this point. I'm just gonna go through the slides back and just vocalize all of it. And then, the last thing I was gonna inform you guys, so today is National Law Enforcement Day. Yeah, I know, I like to elevate the good things that are going on in our district. And so, if you've run into our officers this week, even though you may not have seen them today, please acknowledge them for all the work they do. And so, I'll wait at that point, because we've got.
Anything else? Well, they do have to announce if everybody else is already going.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you want to start that one.
Yeah, why don't we, sorry, okay, why don't we move on to yours, and then I'll, I'll come back to mine.
We have an extra copy for me. I have one copy, please.
Yours?
Yeah. I'll give you a couple of handouts here that we're gonna refer to during this presentation. This will be a short presentation around some stuff that you know, and hopefully, by the end of our time together, you'll have made some new discoveries around our district strategic plan. So, thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm gonna go ahead and take a little bit of time to talk a little bit about our intended learning outcomes. I have about fifteen minutes on the front end, and then I'll come back and close this out on some of these intended learning outcomes later on during the day. But the first intended learning outcome is really just to increase your knowledge and awareness around the district strategic plan. We know that the plan was approved, and as a district now, we must ensure that it's implementable with the day. Also, I wanted to share some insights. During this time together, you'll have an opportunity to kind of talk a little bit about what you know about the strategic plan, and what new insights you can gather from each other. And then, we're also going to talk a little bit about what the school board, what you all can do to help us be successful in the implementation. Okay, so, you all refer to your handout. On the next slide, can somebody read the slide there? Slide number two here on your PowerPoint presentation, sorry. You have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, and someone could just read what that says. Do y'all have a copy of this? I thought I saw it in somebody's. Yes, thank you. Can somebody take liberty that can see the small screen there? For me.
Serving on your school board makes you the bridge between your school district and your community advocacy.
Thank you. One of the biggest things that needs to happen, or conditions for success around the strategic plan, is the advocacy that you all play in the seats that you all are able to sit in. You all have direct communication with community members, and it's so important that you have the information you need, so that you can understand what our constituents are saying, and you can provide support and communicate that back to us. And so, there are a couple of key things in terms of organizational behavior, and I'm on slide three here of this handout, that are really going to be essential for our success. So, anytime you think about an organization, and how an organization really gets to a place where they're running efficiently and effectively, there are three kind, there are three levels throughout the organization, right, that make up the organization. We have the individual level, right? What I bring to the team, the knowledge I possess. We have the group level, the way we interact and collaborate to get work done, right? This team of eight. Then we have the organizational level, how we support the organization. And so, there are a couple of key terms that I want us to really think through, and I try to keep this as simple as possible, do a little bit of research on organizational behavior, what effective organizations do to improve, and kind of thought about what we need in Edgewood to be successful around this plan. And so, as you can see there, at the individual level, one of the things that we need to make sure that everybody possesses around initiatives and things like that, and I'm gonna be referring to this in the context of the strategic plan, is knowledge. Do you have the knowledge you need to really understand what the strategic plan is, why we have it, and what we intend to do with it? Then we have belief. Do you believe in the work that we're doing? As an individual, you have to believe in this work, right? You have to believe that it's the right direction, that we have the right things in place to help us launch this work. And then we have trust. And this is not always an easy one, we get that, trust is earned in an organization, but trust is gonna be important. And from this perspective, it's the trust that we ask of you as a board. You know, I'm in charge of the strategic plan, so I come here asking you as a board to trust that the senior leadership team, the executive team, the folks out there getting the work done, the principals, the teachers, that we want to do good work. And I can assure you that no one on the senior leadership team, you know, works fifty-five, sixty, seventy hours, because we don't want to do the right thing. Okay? We believe in the strategic plan, and so it's important that individually, everybody will be there. And then we have the communication at the group level. Communication is essential, the way we communicate with each other, the way we share knowledge with each other is essential. Collaboration, the way we work through, we find solutions, right? There's always gonna be problems, right? You know, humans make mistakes, there's gonna, problems are gonna arise, you know, it's complex, education is complex, school improvement is complex, raising student achievement is complex, teaching and learning is complex, leadership is complex, right? And so, the way we collaborate and work through solutions is critical to our success. And then there's the engagement. When we talk about group engagement, the way the team of eight engages, the way we engage together, right, as an executive team together, and important, most importantly, the way that you engage with community around these initiatives. And then we have organizationally, what are some key ingredients? Transparency, you know, what we share, how we share it. Most importantly, and Dr. H has talked about this, transparency isn't just about telling everybody everything, right? It's about making sure that fundamentally, people understand why, right? They gotta understand why, and that creates the transparency. And then there's focus, that we have to stay focused on these six goals. You all have adopted these six goals that are really important, there are two local goals, right? So, you have the LSG side, and then you have the community side. And you all remember the brainstorming session that we did to come up with those goals. You all talked and advocated for your communities, for the parents in your communities, for the students, for the neighbor that says, "My child went to coffee," you know, "My child got a ride, school ride, and then came home. Why?" Right? What are we gonna do about that? And that's where those local goals were, how those local goals were developed. So, staying focused on that, and then accountability. In order to hold people accountable in the organization, we must fundamentally understand and believe in what we're doing, we must have the knowledge we need to be successful. Okay, so I've gone through some of these already, we just went through all of this, right? Why are these important? And so, this really is just saying, board, this is what we need from you. This is what we need as a team to be successful in the implementation of the strategic plan. So now, we're gonna take a little bit of time, remember, one of the goals that we had was to increase your knowledge around the strategic plan. And so, this is low risk, which means you're not gonna get a grade, there's not pass or fail. The hope is that when you leave, you will feel better, know more about the district strategic plan. And so, I'd like for you to take a little bit of time to just dot down real quick on a sheet of paper, I think Amelia gave you all some notepads, you can write on the handout, the handout's yours, what do you know about the strategic plan? Be a list of words, just anything, just a quick brain dump. You can give me a thumbs up. You pretty much put down everything you needed to on paper. And you will get some time to explore and expand your knowledge. All right, okay, so now that you've kind of just thought about the strategic plan and jotted down a few things that you know about it, what I'd like for you all to do is take a few minutes to read and review the handout that I gave you. This handout was put in the board update some time ago, maybe back in September, October, we put it in the update a couple of times, but I'd like to give you guys some time now to kind of go through this. This is a quick snapshot, but what I'd like for you to do as you're looking at this is just jot down your insights, just annotate. Maybe you have a question marker or something, maybe you're like, "Yes, I love that we have this in there." So, just what are you thinking and feeling about the strategic plan as you review this information here? And there are two sides to this. There's two separate sheets, there's the overview, and then there's some FAQ. So, just what do you know about what's here? We're gonna connect, what we like to say, connect the text. You guys about good to close out on this piece? Yes? Okay. Thank you. Now, what I'd like for you all to do is really kind of think about, you're gonna just reflect on these, okay? I'm gonna give you some time to think about these questions, because these questions and your discoveries are going to be what leads us into the next little piece of this, and that is to engage in a discussion with your table mate around some of your findings, okay? So, what I'd like for you all to do, and you don't have to say it either, right? If you have other questions or other things that happened during your kind of reading or your reflecting, you can definitely talk about that. But some of the things that you could talk about during your discussion are, did you discover any new insights? Is there something now that you didn't know about the strategic plan that now you're like, "Oh, okay, I didn't really know that was there"? What are you still wondering about? Like, is there something in the strategic plan that you're saying, "Yeah, I know it says that, but I still don't know what that means, I don't know, you know, when that's gonna happen"? You know, what are you still wondering about when it comes to the strategic plan? What makes sense about it? What makes sense about what you're seeing and reading about the strategic plan, what you know about the strategic plan? And then what questions do you still have? And I've given you a couple of index cards. What I'd like to do is to really start collecting questions for you. I encourage you that when you have a question, when you're out in the community and you get, you know, an inquiry from a constituent, that you jot that question down, send it my way, especially around the strategic plan, because we want to do a great job, not just a good job, we want to do a great job, and we want to make sure that we accomplish our goals, because the strategic plan is wrapped around our North Star goal, and there is not one thing that's listed in the strategic plan that isn't already designed based on effective research and based on what we believe will get us to, to accomplish our goal. Okay? And it goes all the way from operation to academics, it's on both sides of the house that strategic plan is designed around that. And so, I'd like to give you just a couple of minutes to jot down your questions and to think about the conversation you want to have with your thought partner. The goal is, remember we talked about collaboration? So, that slide that I shared with you previously here around the individual level, right, gave you some time to individually build your knowledge. And then, at the group level, when you start in your pair share, it's about sharing what you know, because through your conversation, you know, your partner might learn something that they didn't catch, right, in the notes, or they didn't know. And then collaboration, to really think about how we can collaborate and be solution-oriented around some of the issues that might be surfacing, or questions that you might have, okay? Any questions on that? All right, I'm gonna let you guys take a couple of minutes to jot down questions, make any reflections about what you want to discuss. You can just take another quick minute, because I want to make sure you have enough time to engage with some conversation. I would like to ask Mr. Geller, Ms. Garcia, and oh my God, why did I just forget your name?
Gomez.
Gomez. I was like, "I know you." If you guys want to go ahead and head out to, over here to the next room, do not eat all the cookies. I saw them there. But if you all want to just go ahead and make yourself comfortable in there, I want to make sure that you.
Make sure you're in the wrong one. Make sure you're in the wrong.
Of some conversation.
Sit in your own one.
Oh my goodness. Do I need to send her one?
Which one of you, which one else are you talking about?
Oh, my goodness. Do I need to send your...
Which one of you, which one else are you talking about?
Okay. Y'all just come over here, and then you're just gonna kind of share your insights, and I'll be going back and forth between the two groups, okay? And collect any questions for me, greatly appreciated.
You'll come on all the show because...
There's plenty of cookies. Okay. And now, if I can have you all huddle up here. You wanna go ahead and turn your chair around and have some conversation right over here? Frank, you good here, if you can hear? Okay, great. And if you guys wanna just kind of talk about, what did you learn? Share your questions. Share your knowledge. Remember, collaboration and communication is the key to our success, and you're holding it. Thank you.
If you say, the one thing you can say that it can't change more. Because people interpret it as being, they say it right now, and it's gotta be true all the time.
It doesn't evolve.
Right. It's not, because it's true. It changes according to performance, according to... Interpretation?
On the state.
Yes, that's what I said. Yes.
My type is to know what...
Does anybody like any snacks since the other half of your team already ate? We can get them.
We left two of them.
We'll transition him over to Dr. Versa.
Well, I want to thank you very much for your time. I appreciate the heavy conversation we were able to have. I encourage you to continue to have these conversations with each other. The more information that we have, the better service we can provide to our community. I will be back again a little bit later to close this out around our strategic plan. Dr. H?
So at this point, we are going to turn it over. I'm going to just keep going with the agenda. I'll bring mine up at the end to close out. I'm going to go ahead and ask Dr. Versa to go ahead and set up for his part. Are you ready to go, Dr. Versa?
Two minutes.
Two minutes. So guys, if you've got two minutes, do you want to run to the restroom or do you want to run and sort of grab their yogurt? There's all kinds of stuff.
I'm not a man.
Any five?
Five.
Okay, there you go. So please grab a snack, restroom.
There's good snacks, guys.
Yes.
It's a ready powerpoint chat.
Well, I'll put that in the beginning. There you go. Yeah, we just did this one right here.
Whenever you're ready.
So I'm going to first, I'm going to bring in the agenda. We're going to have a frame to continue the conversation. Then after you, it's Mr. Versa.
So funny. Really, I don't know what you can take off of it.
You're late.
I think that was part of the answer.
I saw YouTube as you like.
This is mine.
I see that rock cut to you.
I just thought it reached twenty seconds. This is yours. Oh, cool. I'll, as soon as you're done on that. Yes, we talked to executive reps about bringing in another attorney to speak to the people. So our red one, we're using one and somebody else who's working with the other. But they're going to change that case in some next year.
Ready?
Which are considered in our, in our area, so it would be you.
It's a nice place to visit, huh?
Do you sleep?
Okay. Okay, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. As Dr. Hernandez said, my name is Lloyd Versa. I'm here on behalf of Region Twenty. I'd like to go ahead and give a disclaimer out this morning. I was supposed to be the sidekick for Deanne, who you guys have been really partnered with over a long period of time through LSG. And Deanne contacted the flu yesterday, and I could barely understand her this morning. So instead of pulling out, I just heard, "I will go," and I'll do the presentation. The only caveat is that I am not an LSG certified trainer. I'm in the process. It takes several months. So if you have some background of who I am, Lloyd Versa, I'm the former superintendent, Southwest ISD. I'm a product of the South Side of San Antonio, lived on the South Side all sixty years of my life, and really proud of being from the South Side, Southwest Side, here in San Antonio. What you've done, really proud and honored to come here to Edgewood. You guys are such a historical school district in the backyard of San Antonio that has really led the way in so many facets and so many directions. This being School Board Appreciation Month, I just want to say thank you, thank you, for everything that you do, your service to your community, your service to your youth, service to set some direction, working with superintendent, and doing all the things that we can do to make sure that that generation that's coming up behind us gets a lot of great quality of life because of their experience, because of us. And so I do have a few more comments I'd like to save up for Deanne. So I had to take the very much invented LSG presentation. I had it going this morning when I, we learned that Deanne was not going to be able to make it out of it. The good news is she's home recuperating. The not so good news is you're stuck with me, and we're going to make the best of this holiday we can make collectively together. I want to say from an outside optic, I'm from the outside of Edgewood. I knew a lot of Edgewood people. I have been familiar to work with Phil for many, many years. His time in the region committee, I can tell you before here, there's about a five-foot portrait of Phil. Because he's led a lot of great work, and so I definitely want to make sure that I mention him. One of the slides to start off with, it didn't come through on my presentation, was that student outcomes are directly correlated with adult behaviors. And I know you guys have been through LSG. You probably lean into training collectively more than any board that I know here in San Antonio. That's, that's a point of pride, I think, for Edgewood. It says a lot about who you are as a community, who you are as a school district, who you are as a collective body of oversight for the communities that you serve. So who can just take a shot at that? What does that mean to you? When you hear that student outcomes are directly correlated with adult behaviors, how does that resonate? What is that? What's your takeaway from that, for you?
What I think is the students see how we act, how we interact with the people, how our behavior, they emulate that. You know, they see we fall asleep. What do they, you know, here, so why should I? So that's how I see students interact. Their outcome is solely responsible for what I do, what they see.
Great comment. You're right. It means what we do collectively as adults, how we lead, what decisions that we make. Our inputs and our outputs and our outcomes are directly correlated to what we do as adults. Students are more successful. And so that through LSG is very much resonates throughout their presentations, and it's always something that we come back to at the Service Center and then we have conversations about. I took the PowerPoint that Deanne had, about sixty slides. I've been able to reduce it to kind of roach around LSG by not really getting into the LSG elements. You guys have been through it. You know it. But I thought there were some aspects, and I'm going through my LSG certification, that I really resonated with, that I thought was always good, either to bring back as a refresher or maybe something that we can introduce to give everyone that, oh, okay, that's what that means, a huff to that. So when we talk about outcomes, we're talking about student and adult outcomes. They both have outcomes. How many times do you measure an outcome through a school year for a student? How many times do you think that happens? And we're talking about academic outcomes. They have. Basically, how you write your goal, you're absolutely right. But basically, how we write our goals is we're talking about outcomes one time. Now, we have opportunities to look at our GPM, which is our whole progress measures, multiple times throughout the year. It's required in the law to do it at least one time. The DEA, SPOE recommendations, at least two times. I think, Edgewood, you guys do it even more frequently than that.
Every month.
Every month. So you're setting a new standard, a new way, and it shows that this collective corporate body, your interest is in student performance here. So that's what you talk about most of the time. We'll get more into that. When we look at adult outcomes, it's a measure of school system results that are not student results, outcomes that are not student outcomes. And so my next slide we're going to do, a really short extra slide, it says, when we talk about student outcomes, anyone volunteer to read that? Because I know you just want to give, you talked about, I want to make more interactive. Any volunteer to read student outcomes?
I'm here. Measure of school system results that are student results rather than adult results. Outcomes that are a measure of what a student, what a student know or are able to do.
So what's the difference between the two?
You know what, really, there's none. Whatever outcome you, you have, if your outcome as an adult is self-serving, then it's not going to do any good for the student. If it's not self-serving and it's student-oriented, it's going to help the student.
Well, Steve, and that's very accurate. When we talk about outcomes, setting goals, setting our GPMs, looking at these, when we talk about student outcomes, they are directly related to results of students, the performance on a set relative in alignment with what the goal that we set. An adult outcome is not directly aligned with that. I'll give you an example here on this next slide. Here are some examples, just so we can just clarify in our mind the difference between student outcomes. When we talk about student outcomes, we talk about adult outcomes. I have some bullets on the left side of this slide. Ask you to grab a shoulder partner and talk about new buildings in the district that have a student outcome, adult outcome, student extracurricular activity, balanced budget. So I'd ask you guys, I can give you about two, three minutes to grab your partner. So move to your left or right, right behind you, and go through each one of those bullets. And y'all make a determination, is that a student outcome or is that an adult outcome? We'll come back in a few minutes. So when we come back, we're kind of got through each one. We're just going to have a collective response. Is new building student outcome or adult outcome?
Adult.
Very good. Star results.
Student, but you know, I'm going to throw a wrench in the whole thing. These are all adult outcomes because they're driven by adult priorities.
Yes. They are influenced by adult priorities. You're absolutely right. Specifically, when we're talking about academic performance and we hear the term student outcomes, what we're trying to do is make sure everyone's on the same page. When you hear student outcomes, they're absolute right. They're all influenced by adult priorities. Adult be anywhere. Student extracurricular activities. It's a student outcome. What if I said a member of student extracurricular opportunities?
Adult.
Very good. Balanced budget. Technology program. Adult. Kindergarten attendance.
I'd say adult, adult.
It's actually, it's influenced by adults. Is that what you said, adults? For the purpose of the training, it is a student outcome. When you just look at students attending, whether they're attending regularly or not, it's categorized as students, but you're absolutely right. It's influenced by adult outcomes. SAT, ACT results. Student. Because you're looking at the measurement of students' outcome. Detailed lesson plan.
Adult.
Adult. Earned student industry-based certification. Influenced by adults, but considered as.
Student-driven.
Student outcome. Very good. Teacher incentive plan. School board training. So the idea is that when you guys hear these, a lot of times folks mix up. When we talk about outcomes, we want to basically rely to an opportunity to kind of look at some opportunities and see exactly where they are. Can you go back to the slide? Can you go back? School board training, it could be, it's a student-driven.
But adult.
Okay, because if you're not, you're not going to be, for the student, why have a school board training?
Let me bring you some of these meetings.
I like, I like what you have there. All influenced by different things. You're absolutely right. So you guys are so far ahead of this slide, but I thought it was good just to put up there as a reminder, when you are writing your goals and you guys are in the process of your strategic plan, great presentation, been a lot of districts, you guys are really doing some great work. When you see a goal, a goal has to have four things to it. These four things, they have to have a baseline, what's the current status, where we at? It has to have a target. What is it that we're trying to change by setting this goal? A population identified. What population? We talk about all students. We talk about ESL students. We talk about special education students. And it has to have a deadline. That includes both the month and year. This is all stuff that you guys have been through a number of times, but I thought was important to take a look at. When we look at Texas Education Code, Chapter Eleven, Section Fifteen-Fifteen, this is a statute that really outlines the Board of Trustees' level of engagement. The highlighted part should provide oversight regarding student academic achievement, strategic leadership, for maximizing student performance. How would you say, how much of the general public understands that that's the oversight that you provide as an individual trustee, as collective trustees? Do you think the general public knows that your role is specifically in predominantly about student outcomes, about student performance? Or you think it's about buses, books, buildings? What were your thoughts about that? How the general public, when they look at a trustee?
The general public does not understand what our oversight is. And they do think it's just buildings, books, football games, and whatever extracurricular they can get their kids to, and things like that. Making sure that bus is there, those type of things.
Anyone else have a comment on this particular slide, the statute? That my law basically says the responsibility of the collective board is to really look at student performance, ask questions, and there's ways to look at this, which we're going to get into in a few minutes. That is a statute, Section Eleven, Fifteen-Fifteen, basically added in two thousand seventeen, and is on the books. This is a slide again. This is a slide that Deanne really pointed out to me. As she pointed this out, she let me know that it is the goal, a certain impression, that is the goal of the Edgewood ISD, school board and superintendent, that you all are basically on your way to master's focus. So there's different levels, as you look at the framework for revision and goals. It's much like we see results come back when we get the star results. Did not meet, approaching, meets, masters. So if you take these two columns, this would be basically do not meet, approaches, meets, and masters. I'd like you guys to take three, four minutes. I can read through every one of these, but no, can y'all see this in the back? And why don't you talk to your shoulder partner, and let's have a conversation around where you think Edgewood is right now? We know ultimately, it is the goal of Edgewood to be up here to the right of the master's. When you look at this in alignment with what we call role-specific behaviors, you can take these two columns categorizing, this is a leader of self. You take this, this is a leader of others. You take this column, this is a leader of leaders, and this column right here is a leader of systems. And so when you have those conversations, and you can kind of do that comparison side by side, where do you think Edgewood ISD is right now within the Texas framework and the vision goals as far as where the pathway is? So three minutes, and we'll come back, and we'll have a conversation around this slide. Have y'all had this slide yet? Can you read LSG training?
There's always a distinction of student very last two or three reasons. There's always a distinction. How many surveys we send out? Your responses are limited. We gauge it by, whenever responses you get, and it don't really matter. But. Take it as the norm, or take it as.
Okay, I want to come back and talk a little bit about this. Where, may volunteer, where do you guys think, or is journey? This is a journey. It's not like you get trained, learning half of it. All of this takes time to build that capacity in order to move from the approaches to the meets to the masters. And you guys are definitely on that pathway. Where do you think you are right now?
Personally, I think we're just, we're the meet focus. Because I, I first, I think that I should be, or I should do more as far as communicating with the board. Because like I just told you, I'm read, I read that. I'm not the smartest person in the world, but I'm also not the dumbest. And I read that, and if somebody else reads it, we're talking about each student. I don't know what each student is. They should say, we're focused on a group.
Great point.
Of course, we all, our, our goal is young, our foster. So I think that we, as a body, we need to maybe focus a little bit more on our community, how we engage with the community. And I think that'll get over the hump.
Great point. Anyone else?
Well, I agree. I think we still have meet's focus, and we're going to stay at meet's focus because the last two words of that, masters, community members. And no matter how hard the effort becomes, or comes, comes about to include community members, you're not going to get, if you're going by numbers, I don't know if you're going by numbers or if you're going by input, or I don't know, I don't know what it's meant, what it means. Because if you go by numbers, we're falling flat. So, but I mean, as, as input, it's.
Are you talking about numbers of folks who may attend an event?
Yes, yes.
It's, it's, the, the, that one statement is vague, and it says, agree, there is a broad community ownership. We could agree that, but there may not be. And so in, in reality, we all, I think we all feel the same, that we don't reach that goal of community ownership yet.
Because like I was saying, Michael, if it means intent, then that's, that's already done. But how, you're, what are you measuring? The intent or, or the actual numbers?
Yeah, it's a very valid point. I think there's some opportunities on the journey to create what we call these problems of practice. And that's, and I'm going to tell you, wherever I've been, that's a challenge. The challenge is getting that level of engagement that's so beneficial and powerful to really elevating the school. It's really hard. Folks are working, they have children, lives, life hits everyone, right?
But you know, you can see it when you close a school. You've got, they, you've got. You've got something that's going to affect everybody, and all, everything we do affects everybody. But they see it as, like, for example, we couldn't take it personally to close certain schools, but how can we, how can we tell that to the people whose school is closing? Not to take it personally, to see it, our, our, our end, but it's, it's not, it's not, it's not a valid. Not to take it personally, to see it, are, are in, but it's, it's not, it's not, it's not a valid request for that. So...
It's a hard conversation to have.
Yeah, yeah.
Even harder to receive if you live...
Yes, in the boundaries, yeah.
Anyone else want to talk about where we are, where we might be as a collective? Everyone pretty much agreed with a pretty generally, pretty generally, really direct to me. Which is something to be proud about. I can tell you, people in other districts even close by would love to be at that meets level right now. I think because of your reputation of always leading the training, taking LSG, leatherhorns, being part of wanting to elevate a whole community on the west side of San Antonio is something that folks really see happening here in Edgewood. You guys are doing some dynamic things. We all continue to improve it. There's always something to do. There's always something to get better. There's always something that we can collectively lean into to make every classroom even better. One of the things that we're having a lot of conversation about at the service center and within through LSG is that the way that we communicate, the way that we talk to one of the those conversations that we have, our, our conversations are, do we feel that we can be genuine and authentic? Do we feel that we can say what's on our mind? And there's certain links to do that. And we're talking specifically when we're looking at student outcomes, our language is very important. I don't know if someone can read the Edgewood colored text on the bottom? It's supposed to be in color. Can someone read that out loud for the group? Specifically, the last sentence.
Language is a powerful tool, a means of communication that has allowed humanity to express thoughts, feelings, and ideas for centuries. It is the cornerstone of human civilization, enabling us to connect, understand, and cooperate.
What does that mean to you, Tony? Take that thirty seconds, and just ask yourself what that means to you.
To me, it's how we work together.
How, it's how we talk to one another.
How we address each other, you know? We, we respect the thoughts and the ideas.
In, there's two examples up here, two questions asking the same thing. The first question is, what should we do to fix this, whatever this is? This needs fixing, right? So let's just say it's this. What should we do to fix this? Another way to ask it, what might we do to fix this? What's the difference between those two questions?
One wanted to, one thinking about it. One, one is wanting to do, and the other one, what they think about it. The like, the like, want to do it, I may not.
One is, we're going to do this, so we're going to fix it. One is, well, we might do this, maybe not.
And I, I'm going to challenge you all to look at it a little different as well, and then the law. Do you think that this one could be considered, like some, to be a little more offensive than this one? Do you think the way we ask, what should we do, that we put on blinders to whatever this is? Is it like, just kind of approach? And what might we do? Is that more like an invitation for other folks to give them the participation?
It's obvious that there's a disconnect between what, what the, the school board is trying to make happen and what the community thinks, you know, what's happening. It's spending more time, you know, continuing to remind the community that, you know, at the core of all of this is what these hundreds, hundreds of people came together and came up with, you know, this is our, you know, this is our vision, our mission, our, our strategic plan, our really super technical, this is all in alignment, you know, for children, you know, outcome advancement.
A lot of that is based on what? A lot of that is based on ask, query, ask.
Absolutely. And I think that we're continuing to remind the community. Because oftentimes, they're very quick to voice their opinion. Who are they basing it on? Are they basing it on one specific thing or, you know, all of the things that need to happen in order to achieve children outcomes? So I think that, that connection there is what I think the work needs to happen.
It's, one's closed, and the other one's open. The should part is saying that I can do it. I should, I should be the one to do it for it. We, we might do means it's opening up for everyone, for everyone. So it's like the school board that doesn't want to do for the better, and the school board that wants to do for the better.
Now, now, take that into the dice. So the communication, when I say superintendent, I mean superintendent in this team. But we always use the word superintendent, encompassing of his first level team as well. So in a meeting that you all may be having, a closed meeting, if this needs fixing, do you think even in that meeting, one of these resonates differently than the other one?
Generally, or just as a...
Generally.
Okay, generally. I think it's more the should. The true, the closed minded is the...
That's the critical sense.
Yeah.
I agree.
But is it different coming through, that there is a different way to ask questions when you're either in those, those opportunities or others that are more open, more engaging, more inviting? And it's all based on, this is the slide that started this that we talked about.
Based on the language you're writing this slide, Tony.
Are you, are you actually saying what you, what you mean to say, or are you just saying something just to say? In other words, it's, it's, um... Anyways, to connect, understand, and cooperate. Saying what you mean as opposed to meaning what you say. So you, you don't get what I'm, what I'm getting, what I'm getting at? Okay. Do you know what I'm saying?
So as we talk about questions, I know that Mr. Chavez does this monitoring report with you all month to month, right? Those are great opportunities to really kind of lead into questions, because you represent the community. You're elected either in your district or your place, or at large. And you're representing not just the person that lives to the right, but you're representing the whole community. And so you are their collective voice when you get to come into a meeting. And, you know, as I say, if, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. So how we, the words we choose to use, and the words that we use ultimately have a lot to do with how far we, we go together. So I think, you know, a lot of this is ISO two point oh that's coming out. There's a lot more information that's coming out on how we, we participate in the process when we ask questions. Because you guys are on the side of oversight, and the superintendent's team is on the side of management. So the board is the what. You determine with the superintendent, this is the what in our school district. And then when that's collectively agreed upon, then it goes into the how. And that's what the superintendent, his team, they're in charge of the how. But then collectively, who benefits have what we get it all right is our youth. You know, we get to live a, a better quality of life above their appearance in schools. So as we go through here, you can hear a lot more about this as you continue your LSG. Have y'all seen these questions? I think they're roach upon, they're really being emphasized on now as we get to ISO two point oh. There are three ways to ask questions, technical, tactical, and strategic. As I was looking through the strategic plan in PowerPoint beginning, you guys are really into the tactical part within that. You actually use the word tactical here. So when we look at these three different ways of, of being able to ask questions, the technical part is trying to understand how something is measured. And so the technical questions that we come up with, the issue of better understanding for what's being measured, how does it be measured, what does this mean, what does that mean? When you look at the technical questions, it's a focus on the understanding of the details surrounding the assessment in the goal detail. So it's only asking detailed questions about what it is we're trying to accomplish, with whatever question we're trying to answer. When we look at, when we look at tactical, it's trying to understand how something is done. So the tactical part, when you look at something, is, well, how is that done? If we're going to take an assessment, what teachers have been training? What environment are the students who are being assessed? What environment would they be in? Will it be conducive to an environment where they can have ability to think, or is there noise next door? So the tactical is how, if, either assessment, for purposes of this, we're talking about student academic outcomes. It is a focus on understanding details surrounding the goal, implementation of the assessment in the goal. And so we have your technical, which is understanding how we're going to measure something, how we're going to embed something, what's the results say to us when I see this result? What does it mean? Tactical is how was that test taken? Where was it taken? Who was trained to assess it? So there's a difference between technical and tactical. When you get to strategic, that more leans into the superintendent's side, the strategic questions. Because we want to learn about whatever it is, we're talking about third grade assessment. We want to learn the details about what that assessment is. We want to learn the details about how that assessment is, is challenged by students. Strategic questions, they try to understand how something aligns to the priorities. It is a focus on understanding relative to the goal, what we've learned about system performance, and what we've learned from that performance. A great place to really lead into the technical, tactical, and the strategic question is an opportunity, for instance, during, when you are getting the monitoring of your goal progress measures, you're seeing those are really great opportunity to ask detailed questions about what does this mean? What does that mean? How is it taken? When is this taken? And the strategy, the strategic...
Okay, we can start now.
We have to start in the other room. The, take your pockets.
Where you want to sit.
So we talked about the strategic part of the question. It's really understanding relative to the goal. What is that aligned? What are we trying to achieve? How are we going to achieve this goal? And I would use, we have a little time. So just imagine a football scoreboard. And what's on that football scoreboard, say, the second quarter of the game going on? Think of that scoreboard. What's on that scoreboard?
The scores, the, we have time left, it's got...
Information, information. There is a lot of information that you can find from looking at a football scoreboard. Testing the first down, if that's been tied, still remaining, testing where the ball is, testing the value is. So there's a lot of information in there. And so the game's not over, right? The game's not going to be over until when? No, no, no. At the end of the fourth quarter. But there's a lot of great information to extrapolate from that scoreboard in order to either readjust, to make a modification, to do something else. And so I literally, that's part of that strategic question. You can ask those questions. You don't have to wait until you get your student outcome at the end of the school year. You get to ask along, as you're looking at GPMs along the way, to see if there's any opportunity to, to refine something, to change something. And what you use a lot, when you have those conversations, is ask experience. I've done this before. What was the outcome before? What do we do? Everyone knows the definition of sanity, right? Do you already have one?
Yeah.
So this gives you an opportunity, that you guys are doing it month to month, it's incredible, that you have an opportunity to ask some really great questions, either on the technical side, tactical side, and the strategic side, to make sure that we're doing all those things along the journey so that we don't wait to the end, we're surprised with X result. We get to ask questions along that way. One of the things I put here, and I don't know, I don't think we're going to actually do the lighting, but let's, let's just go back to technical. Your shoulder partner, using this goal right here, example goal, right? It's not your goal, using this example goal. The percentage of third grade students who scored meets grade level or above on star reading will increase from forty-five percent in June twenty twenty-two to sixty-four percent by June twenty twenty-seven. You have your current rate, currently twenty-two percent, twenty twenty-two, about forty-five percent. So starting with the end in mind, that's where we want to be, to match our goal right here. And so you, with the end in mind, you go back, and you set milestones along the way for each year. And through the progress monitor, you get to have an optic to that milestone. You get to ask questions from the technical side, on the tactical side, strategic side. So with your partner, right here, here's your GPM for that. The percentage, and GPM is a goal progress measure, which means these are things we're going to implement along the way. Goal progress measure is GPM one point two. The percentage of second grade students reading on grade level according to the district's chosen assessment will increase from sixty percent in June twenty twenty-two, that's your current status, to seventy-three percent by June twenty twenty-seven. So first, let's go back and see if we got the elements of a goal. Is that a real goal? Does it have current status? Does it have identified population? Does it have an end status in the goal? It's a good goal. It meets all, all the elements of it. So with your shoulder partner, unless you guys want to write these out, we can do it either way. But I thought we had a conversation. Think of what might be a good technical question to ask on this data that you have here. I remember technical is looking at the assessment itself and asking questions in reference to what we're asking students to do, or what that number means. So two minutes, kind of shoulder partner. Let's just try to articulate a technical question or two from this goal to GPM. I tell you what, because we are really short of time, you can use it to do technical, tactical, or strategic. We need to say example technically. So question for that one. So who wants to share either a technical, tactical? Quick question about either one of you.
Okay. The question I came up with is, is it a practice? If we fail to meet the measure in one year, how do we anticipate correcting and getting back to where, to meet our next measure?
And that's a tactical, technical question. And that's a really great tactical question. So what Joe was saying, so we get into our first year, Mr. Chavez, we're going through the GPM. We see that the results after year one, instead of forty-eight percent, it was forty-four percent. And so what change were you making? Well, we can't keep going down this line. Over the four years, what I think it would be our goal, sixty percent, sixty-four percent. So what are we doing different? Why are we going to keep doing the same thing, not doing the same result? So it's a really great way to open up the dialogue, ask those questions in a way that's collaborative with everyone that's authentic, genuine. It's not like a gotcha. It's like, we're really interested in making sure if we're going to meet this goal, we have to be at this milestone one, we have to be at milestone two, we have to be at milestone three. Should you ever change a goal? If you're off, bringing that up. Should you ever change a goal if you happen to be off that milestone? There are only two ways to change a goal. Number one, if you sort of pass that ultimate goal, like in year three. So in twenty twenty-four, you're already at sixty-five percent. Then you can change a goal. Or after the five years exhaust, you have a new strategic plan. It comes in, that's where the goal will be changed. Can you modify GPMs along the way? They're living, doctor, and doctor. And through your questioning, technical, tactical, strategic, you're allowed to change tactical. And so I know my time, and that went really quick. I just want to say thank you for allowing me to come out here. And I really, I want to applaud Dr. Hernandez, he doesn't pay me or anything. I have an upside optic. I work with school districts all throughout Fair County. Been at Southwest for thirty-three years, who followed hard in June. And I can tell you, you guys have done a great job partnering with superintendent here at Edgewood IT. When I'm in meetings with other superintendents in Edgewood's room, when he speaks, and I shared this with him before. When he speaks, the other superintendents take note. They resonate with it. He has a lot of influence in what we do collectively in Fair County. The great thing about Fair County, a lot of people say we have all these fragmented school districts, but the great thing is we have a lot of individualization for our communities. And the greatest thing and the most, I think, influential thing in person, to do for the community, we partner the school with. That's where the real work happens. That's closest to runs early, early, yeah. And so, George, who more appreciate you, love. I just want to say thank you for everything that you guys do, your commitment. And I appreciate the time today. I will get out of the way so we can move on to your second presentation.
Second round. Second round with Selena's. I think we'll take a break.
Hey, I'm gonna, oh, Amelia, is this, is this?
Yeah, you want to backtrack towards, okay? You want to backtrack to words?
Uh, yeah, just. I don't know if it's in the beginning of this, but.
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you for joining us, Dr. Hernandez. Appreciate you being here. You missed all the fun, but we got just a little bit, fifteen more minutes of lunch for you. Here's a couple more note cards. Does anybody need a note card for more questions? Because once I see you, I'm gonna pick up the questions you have. And then Amelia, if you can help me out and gather any more note cards. Again, this is so that we could continue to improve. So we left off our conversation around what are some questions that you have around the strategic plan? What are some things that we can do better about? What makes sense to you? Because we talked about this, and I'm gonna just bring us back to this real quick. At the individual level, the team of eight, right? Our Edgewood team are collectively together. We must have knowledge, belief, and trust, right? And so I encourage you to continue to build your knowledge, to let us know through the questions you have, what we can do a better job of, to help build your knowledge. So when you go out into the community, you're armed with information you need to ask the right question and to receive the feedback in a way that helps us improve. And so now I kind of want to just take us here. So what have we done organizationally? What is the senior leadership team doing around this plan? Well, we actually have thirty-three key performance indicators that are in operation. We're working on them, we're launching them. Some are new initiatives, some are initiatives that we've been doing, but we're measuring differently. And they're all linked to the goals and the actions in the strategic plan, okay? These are things that we have conversations around. We actually, when I get here, I'll kind of talk, go back to the key performance indicator. But we've also done a lot around the training and development of our people. Remember, we talked about at the individual level, we must possess the knowledge. So we've gone through some training with external support around what do effective organizations do to improve? How many of you were at the board retreat in July? With the district leadership team? Do we have some board members that attended? No? Okay.
I have this year.
Oh, okay, it was the year before. We did some training with the entire district leadership team. That means every assistant principal, every coordinator, every director of the district. We had all of our coordinators and all of our executive team was there. And we did training on how great organizations move the needle. What are the things that we need to do? So we're investing some time in people, setting up the systems of support. You go slow to go fast. Training, and now, now we're working through performance management. We're not done yet, there's more training to come. But we've done things like take risk assessments to find out what we need to, where our blind spots may be. We want to get the perception of our, of our team around that. We've also done some work around structures, processes, and systems. What are the structures right now that are in place? Who reports to who? What do those conversations sound like? How can the process for reporting change in terms of how we structure conversations? So now the conversations around the KPI. You know, how are you doing on that KPI? What's going on with the KPI? You're gonna hear a lot of that happening throughout the organization. And then how do we use these systems, you know, in everything, all the other work that we do, right? When we connect it to the strategic plan? When we connect it to LSG? When we report to the board during our board workshops and things like that? Sure, okay, I was like, is that just me? Oh, okay. Esports or robotics competition going on over there. And then technology. When I talk about technology, just talking about how we use technology to help us measure performance. How are we communicating things differently? How are we setting up our data infrastructure? We're doing a lot of work around this. We had a lot of rich data systems, but now it's about where is data held? You know, which data system does what? And how can we effectively get the information? So we're working on some system enhancements around how we might report this back. We actually, one of the system enhancements that I'll briefly share with you is these thirty-three KPIs. And I think Dr. Hernandez got to see a little snippet of that KPI tracking system. So we have our district, district strategic plan advisory committee. Did get to share just a real quick snippet around the draft model for how to track all of our KPIs. And that means that in one given moment in time, once we get our baseline and everything in there, that you could go to the system and you could push a button and it'd say, you know, Terry Salinas is thirty percent on track. The goal is eighty in two years, whatever the case may be. And then external, this is, yes, sorry. This is the communication piece, getting the conditions ready for success. Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yes.
So thirty-three KPIs, is that, do you say that's an average?
No, that's the exact number, but each of us might have a different number. Like I have four KPIs, someone else might have three KPIs.
The total you're saying is thirty?
The total is thirty.
Other districts, do they have a similar number of KPIs?
I don't know if other districts do KPIs.
Well, how many people are so similar?
Twelve.
So it's the senior leadership.
Yes, we have a different amount.
So that doesn't filter down to?
Actually, yes, it does. But the thirty, so remember the, in the district strategic plan, the owners, if you look at that plan on the website today, you're gonna go through it. And if you see who's the responsible person, you are gonna see members of SLT, that's it. You're not gonna see the director of multilegal services, right? Does the director of multilegal services have a KPI? Yes, they do. Because everybody's developing at least one, right? The goal is, when we talk about system enhancements and we talk about shifting the culture, what we're looking at is moving into an appraisal system for employees that's driven by KPIs. That's kind of all tied to the system and our goals. So we're headed in that direction. We're the ones who are reporting on our own and being held accountable, but everyone else has this.
So we left a couple of KPIs?
Yes. The KPI is the key performance indicator, okay? And a key performance indicator is a way to measure success. It's, some, it has a goal, it's goal related, most definitely. But it's one of the ways, it's almost like a leading indicator, right? The key performance indicator helps you know how you can get on track with your goal. So our goals are A and B rated schools, right? We want healthy learning environments for students. So one of my KPIs is to ensure that we improve our net promoter score, right? Why? Because the community recommends our organization to a friend, right? If people feel better about what the district is doing, then enrollment increases, right? All of those things start to happen. And so that's kind of how that works.
So sure, does every employee in the district have a KPI?
Yeah. We are doing a slow roll. This is year one, our baseline year. It's starting with us, our senior leadership team, and our direct reports. It'll trickle down eventually, but right now it's just us.
Sorry, one question, is that, are you doing this monthly or monthly?
They're doing conversations. We collect the data at various intervals. So some of the KPIs, just by nature of the KPI, are, while you might be able to report on them, it's something you might not know about until the very end. You know what I mean? Because that's almost like, you know how we have star data? Like star data comes at the very end. But you've got some map data, right? That kind of gives you a little predictor. And so it really depends on the KPI, but the conversations, our conversations that we have during standing meetings, and Dr. H has conversations about KPIs during his meetings with Mira and Phil. And did you want to?
I do want to add something. I believe in giving people credit for this work. So first and foremost, board, one of the slides that I was gonna show you was that one of the earlier decisions that you made in twenty eighteen was that you allowed our school district to adopt as a theory of action, the system of grade schools plan. The system of grade schools also allowed us to come into contact with other individuals who are outside technical providers. So our chief innovation officer, who is Ms. Selena, that's why she's here, took it upon herself and did a lot of training around how do we use the language around KPIs? And use the money that the state gives us grants? And we were able to hire an external person. You've seen him running around the district, Garrett Landry. Garrett Landry's done a lot of work with much bigger systems like Dallas and other districts across the country. But what he's done is he's allowed us to change our language more. For those of you that have been on the business side of things, you probably recognize that term. So it's really looking more at your key, so say, I'm gonna own this key performance indicator. First year, I'm not gonna go with ten, because ten is too many. I have two, that I'm gonna first learn how to, one, make it a SMART goal. Like Dr. Versa was saying, is it something that's attainable? Does it have a time limit? Does it actually shoot for something in an audience? And then what does that look like? How am I gonna progress check myself? And then those conversations need to happen with, if I'm a director, then it's the executive director, or it's the chief of academic service, wherever it is. But it changes our lens in terms of the everyday conversations that are happening in the school district. I will tell you, that is not language that a lot of school districts are using. Because I know she goes to training, Ms. Bentley, who's no longer with us, we're going to ERG training. That also allows us to talk about things like rate of investment, rate of return, those kinds of things, which were not common for school district people. Remember, everybody, most of us on the school district, SOT, were teachers. Most of us would not go to business school. And so that's not to say, that's not to, that's not to quit. If you run anybody's intelligence, everybody's highly intelligent. But you're learning a different language. So thank you guys for allowing us. Thank you, Ms. Selena, for leading it and having a thought partner with Mr. Chavez and Ms. Martinez. And we all have this conversation also, thank you.
Any other questions on the KPIs or anything you see here? We've got a lot of work to do. I share this because I'm glad we've got everything up and off the ground. Like I said, we've got thirty-three KPIs in motion, or good KPIs. I have been working with an external evaluator to ensure that we're on the right track. It's imperative that throughout this process, we have someone from the outside catching our blind spots. Someone from the outside that's able to really bring in expertise from, you know, across the nation. And that's been extremely invaluable to this work. And they actually have the system set up, we've just got to kind of finalize it. And the last thing that I kind of want to go back through, so I did a little bit of reading and I read an article from the National School Board Association by a guy named Rick Maloney. And he, what he did is he synthesized like all the work of boards, right? And said, how can I communicate the four big ideas around the work of the board? And as I thought through this, I immediately started making all these connections through LSG, right? And what he talked about was that boards carry different goals, right? Ball one, kind of strategic voice. So what does that mean in our context? That really means that you work hand in glove with each other, with the community, with our district team. And really think about, and come to the center of this work, with student outcomes at the heart of it, right? Bringing community values, hope, dreams for students. That's, that's the big idea there. And then there's operational guidance, right? There's policy budget decisions, directions. And there's something really key here, and I know that you learned this through your LSG training, right? In terms of the work of the board, in governance, and the work of the district. And it's really bringing all of these things to light without limiting the effects of micro-management. And I really appreciate the way this board has approached this work over the last couple of years in allowing us to do the work that we need to do in schools. And then accountability. Acting on behalf of the public, rigorously monitoring the school system and performance. In order to rigorously monitor and do it in a way that doesn't feel like micro-management, that feels like teamwork, that feels solution oriented, it's gonna take that knowledge, belief, and trust. And so I know you all are getting governance ready and you've been still polishing this up at the heart of all of this work. And at the end of the day, in that article, what it said was, none of this strategic voice, operational guidance, or accountability matters if there's no governance readiness. And so I thank you for engaging in this training today. Team of eight to build collaboration and work towards shared goals. And Dr. H, you're fine?
So we're gonna take, we're gonna take a five minute break, guys. Mr. Cruz is our last presenter, and he does have a lot of information to go through the show. Five minutes, remember the snacks are next door, if you want to go and grab some. And we'll be ready to go in our seats in five minutes, please.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Exactly, right?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
I don't know, I'm working with this.
No, I'm adding something real quick.
Are you going to talk to the record?
No, no, I hold the, I hold it.
Okay, cool.
It would've been so much easier if I could have it here.
On the raptor, so she's too many.
Why does it take you so long to get out of this room?
He's gotta give you all a fifteen minute head start when you're walking in front of it.
Hey, where's Mr. Gettleman?
So the guy that shows up late.
I wasn't late, I was busy. There's a difference. Look, if you wanna fund me for a year, I'll show up to everything on Sunday.
Louis backyard. Never been there?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good time.
That's yours?
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Next time we're gonna do it, uh, just great to screen. Do you like those flashes?
Press fast forward.
That's your slide. No, that was a slide. That was the first slide. The picture wasn't showing.
I'll just open it.
Yeah, that would be easy.
There you go.
Yep. Yep.
Good.
It's all work. One more, start up. Fifty gold.
We're ready to roll?
Yes.
All right. Well, first of all, Happy New Year, once again, to everyone. I think that, um, you know, as we head towards the year, um, it's important to kind of like look back a little bit of where you have been and where we have been, right? And, um, I do feel that we try to plan as much as possible, hence this like planning meeting. But there's still little saying that says you tell God, uh, what you, your plans and you basically make him shovel, right? Because at the end of the day, you leave it up to someone else and you do your best to kind of control what you can't control. Twenty twenty-three was dealt with a lot of stuff, both professionally and personally, and I'm sure for all of us. Um, for me personally, you know, losing my dad was a huge part of twenty twenty-three that I did not feel was, um, you know, coming, uh, as much as I think I prepared. And I always thought that I was an expert at grief, having lost, had my sister at the age of forty-three and my, uh, cancer. And my mother, that I thought that I was already kind of used to how the grieving process worked. And it really did not turn out that way. Uh, and I say that, folks, because as we approach it here, and I think some of us are dealing with hard situations, family situations, you do your best at your school board duties, but don't let it take over each and every facet of your being the whole time. Because you're here as a public servant. You're here to basically do your best. Sometimes you're gonna make errors. That is just part of human life. And as we grow older, uh, especially a lot of us that are been through stuff, you realize that, um, you try to handle it with as much grace as possible, but you realize that what is important in life is, you know, kind of your, your personal stuff, right? Because a friend of mine tells me, you don't wanna work so hard, go to all these districts on the road. Now, you already started this week, next week, following week. But at the end of the day, you know, when we're come, you know, that our time comes, it's gonna be basically our friends and families that are gonna be close to us, right? So use this time as twenty twenty-four, and I have in here just a really quick thing. You know, what better time to reflect on where we've been as a school board in twenty twenty-three? And I know that the school closures were a big thing for you all, something that may still linger because your community was involved. But also look at in terms of, okay, where do you want school to, board to be? Because you're here temporarily. You know, you're not here forever and ever. You know, that's not really the function of any, uh, city council, county commissioner or school board member, right? I don't wanna be too euphoric about stuff, but you know, H O B S is something that I think is part of our foundation of government, right? And H O B S has this whole thing about being basically, we have a social contract. And this social contract is what, you know, governs. You know, we have personal differences. That is democracy, all right? You're not gonna get anybody that says yes all the time, no, or, you know, uh, everybody in unison. But you work to make sure that you cooperate for the better good. That is what our constitution is founded on, because that's really what, you know, H O B S was part of, you know, our riders during the Civil War, right? So you ask yourself, as we begin this, and kind of I'm gonna go through it quickly, how do you wanna be treated? And I always tell people, you treat me the way I, you, you treat me the way and I will treat you with the same respect. You give me disrespect, then don't expect me to respect you. All right? And it's, I think, part of what, it's my mind, my mom taught me, right? You always treat others the way you wanna be treated. Um, and what do you think as a leader? You, uh, there's a lot of expectations on Martha, and I have conversations with her every now and then, uh, especially when, you know, she had a few setbacks. So Martha, you take your role as a leader seriously, you do your best, but you gotta move away from it, right? Always, for me, if I've had a long day, at the end of the day, I'm gonna be watching comedy shows. You know, I like, you know, back in the day, Cheers, you know, happy, I'll go and find them and it makes me laugh and I disconnect. You've got to have that out yourself, all right? Be professional, but at the same time know that this is part of your life, not your entire life. Another resource that I share with you, and I'm not gonna read slides, I hate reading slides, but Tasby has a good, you know, in one of the presentations about the behavior supports. Those that are doing, you know, super well and those that are not. And at the end of the day, they're focusing their resources, whatever they may be, on high achievement. And I know many times, especially, you know, my tio, my tia would always tell me, mi hito, you gotta see, that's okay, that's good. I know sometimes we wanna foster videoity, but that's not really our role. We should always be, if you can do an A, you do an A. So it's like, that's kind of like what you wanna be, right? You, your school system is doing maybe some improvements, but you want more. And it's okay for you to tell administration that you want more so that they have somewhere to go, right? Setting goals for the boards and prevent, a lot of the stuff that you have, that Tasby has, has like their little paradigm as to boards that are doing good and not good, I think a lot of it does resonate. And the third thing and the last thing is basically your school board development that is not sponsored by Tasby, which is a nonprofit, or, you know, any other nonprofit out there. This is T E A. This is their framework. And they, to develop this framework, they have really five book of preferences, right? The visions and the goals, you know? At the end of the day, you set your vision, your goals, but you trust the superintendent and his staff to carry them out. You're not there to do a day-to-day job in terms of, is there enough soap in that restroom? Is there enough, you know, uh, are people, you know, mowing the lawns? That's not your function. Your function is more global. Um, and they also have, TA has systems and processes telling boards, how do you get to your vision and your goals? At the end of the day, and we've done a lot of revisions, I'm gonna talk about some of them right now, the board operating procedures, right? The board operating procedures are what, how you kind of govern yourself. Of course, you adopt your budget, so on and so forth. And you monitor, right? That's your accountability. You know, are you growing, you're establishing your boards and goals and you evaluate one person only? That's your superintendent. Whether or not he's doing the job that you think he's doing and whether or not he needs improvement so that he can share that improvement with the rest of the staff. Uh, and advocacy, communications. Uh, you have this in your board operating procedures already about, you know, you don't speak for the board unless you're giving authority to speak for the board. And in addition to that, if you're gonna go visit a school campus, you need to inform people because anytime that a board member steps on a, uh, on a campus, it's disruptive. Let's face it. You may be well intentioned, but at the end of the day, people are gonna focus on that board member because he or she is a board member, okay? And he or she has a vote. So that, that's, that's the reality of it. Yes, go there, but look at your operating procedures to make sure that you're not interfering with reading, writing, math, so on and so forth. And think, what they do is, uh, the last part is the synergy and teamwork. Uh, don't be focused on individual agendas. Be focused on basically working at a goal. So what are some of the consequences when, you know, these things, whether you call it H O B S or that you call it T E A, whatever? Um, has your, uh, Edgewood been the product? Or has been the recipient of bad consequences? Yes. We all know what happened. Roy is here. Uh, partly because of what happened in twenty sixteen with Edgewood I D C. You don't wanna go there. And what they say is if you don't respect your, you know, your history, then your history, then it becomes prolonged, right? You wanna walk away from that. Um, and a good way is ask yourself, how are you gonna be treated? Look at your, you know, uh, your board operating procedures. Simply, folks, look at your, you know, what we have added in the board ethics. And I'm not gonna read to you all the board ethics, it's in your board operating procedures. But I do wanna focus on some of them. And if you wanna topicize it, that's fine. Um, what are the things that your board ethic says? Basically, I will encourage expressions of different opinions and listen with an open mind to others' ideas. What does that mean, uh, I guess to you? Richard, what do you think about that? I will encourage expressions of different opinions and listen with an open mind to others' ideas.
It's a given because you expect them to do the same thing when you say something.
Yeah. Do you think that that's something that this board needs to work on? Or you think that you're, you get that accomplished?
I think it's something, no, definitely, definitely need to work on. Yeah, but with the, with the mindset that, um, if, if it's, it's, if it's a question of it needs, if someone's asking it, then they're asking it for a reason.
Yeah.
But that it needs to be for that reason, not for everything else that's going on. Um, if you're, uh, wanna know, uh, the cost of something or why we're, why we're spending money on this and on that, then, then be satisfied with the answer. Because wherever you're, wherever you're asking, you're not asking another board member who may know as much about it or as little about it as you do. You're asking someone who has the expertise in it. If they have the expertise in it, then, you know, listen to them and just try and imagine that, you know, or feel really that they know what they're talking about. Because if you don't have any idea, then how are you gonna compete them or contradict them? So.
That's good. Another one that you also have, and it says basically, you have a whole thing on honor and conduct. And one of the things that it says, I will respect the majority decision as the decision of the board. What do you, what do you think about that? I will respect the majority decision as the decision of the board.
Open minded. You gotta, you know, you gotta listen.
Yeah.
You know, I, I may be sitting there and make a suggestion or something and, so Richard raises that, and he's making a suggestion. I gotta listen to what he's saying. Because, you know, in my line of work, I had, instead of thinking this, I was trying to see this. So it, it, it's a, this is a give and take.
And, and I think this is important because even if you're in the majority or in the minority, things may not go your way all the time. You may not get the votes for whatever principle you thought should've got, got that decision. You move on. If you're the minority, you move on, you know, to the next vote.
And the, the most important thing about all this is we can agree to disagree. At the end of the day, we're still neighbors.
Yeah.
So, you know, we don't make it personal.
Another one is this, I will base my decisions on fact rather than supposition, opinion or public favor. Mike, what, what does that mean to you? It says, I will base my decisions on fact rather than supposition, opinion or public favor.
Yeah, the facts there, so we only wanna go on what's, what's factual instead of what someone thinks is right.
And I think, Michael, right now, what I see as I kind of, a lot of people are getting their opinions on social media. Uh, not necessarily just the school district, that's in every school district. That's in our federal government, that's in our state government. Where somebody looks at clicks on a particular social media site or page or Twitter, whatever, and they go by that. That must be true. Without really doing the due diligence, as a lot of us, like you did not grow up with social media, before you wrote something, a newspaper reporter would write it, they would fact check it. Not once, not twice, three times. Now, people just can throw it out there, put a nice graphic on it, and people think, oh, it must be true. You know, it has like a really good graphic and stuff. You know, it has like a really good graphic and stuff there. Come on, you know? Um, another one, it says this one, "I will treat colleagues, district administrators, staff, and members of the community with courtesy, honesty, and respect at all times during board meetings, individual meetings, conferences, district sanction events, and social events."
Treat people as you would want them to treat you, that's basically called dignity.
Yeah. Uh, that is very true. I mean, that basically goes back to the old adage that, uh, that, uh, you know, you, you want people to be, um, acoustic with you. Then you share the same type of values, then we'll be, you know? So I think it's that, you kind of, it's what, what you give is what you, um, bring to the table.
We should be, you should be, all the time, you should be focused on what we need, what we're there for, not to be fighting those yourselves.
Right. One of the things also, it says, "I will recognize the integrity of my predecessors and colleagues." Jakers?
Yes.
I will recognize the integrity of my predecessors and colleagues.
What's the question, like, what does it mean to me?
Yeah.
Um, then I'll, um, then I'll, in, in a way, build on what already has been done, um, and not just come in and try to just make things new again. Because that's, that makes things more difficult, and a lot of the work that's already been done, you wanna, um, you wanna use that to further the goals, not just, you know, a new set of board members comes in, or one or two or three board members come in, and they wanna redo everything. Because that makes it difficult for superintendent, for the board members. Um, and just kind of, in a way, kind of do your research on what has been done before. That way you can make a decision of, you know what, I like the way they did that, you know? Or, you know what, they did this, maybe we can do a little bit different this time. Um, for me, it's just, yeah, like I said, like doing, doing your research before you make a decision. Because, um, we might not understand the decision or why it was made at first. Um, but there might be reasons why that certain decisions were made. So we need to ask, you know, hey, why was this decision made? I don't agree with it, I just wanna know a little bit more. Or I do agree with it, how did y'all come to this, you know, this, this vote or something like that?
Uh, I think Dr. Nunn started a little bit with that at the very beginning, by acknowledging people that have been on the board of managers. Uh, you know, and I think that's, Roy, to your point, or, you know, when Edgewood was established a long time ago, it almost got a reset button with your board of managers. Could you agree with that?
Yeah, that was just me.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So a lot of what I think you're building off, throughout, is your board of managers, not necessarily so much of the past. Um, so, and I think that that reset button has been going well, uh, but it's respecting where you've been. And not going back there to where you, you know, could be. Um, and then face it, folks, with this, you know, with an election, it could all be over in one fell swoop when, if you get wrong people in there, right? That are not there for the right reasons, but are there just to be disruptive, right? Um, another one that it says, um, it says, "I will, I will seek continuing education that will enhance my ability to fulfill my duties effectively." Which is what's going on right now, right? Continuing your, you know, becoming a better board member. And last but not least, it says, "I will prepare for and attend board meetings." Uh, Frank, what does that mean, uh, in your mind? I will prepare for and attend board meetings.
Reading material?
Yeah. Um, and it, and I wanna kind of like, break off that to go through the board operating procedures. Because I think that this has been a source of contention here at Edgewood. Um, I told you that I don't like to read stuff, but this is what's in your board operating procedures that we need to kind of be mindful of. Number one, questions about the agenda. This is what you have to prove. It says, "Board members should direct agenda-related questions to the superintendent at least twenty-four hours before the board meeting. If the information is not available, the superintendent will inform the board member prior to the beginning, beginning of the meeting." And it says also, "Request for additional materials relating to regular board meeting agendas shall be made at least one business day prior to the beginning of the meeting." I think the reason you have that, and the reason why a lot of people do that, is so that you don't have five, six, seven-hour board meetings.
Yeah.
So that if you have questions, you have the ability to email, or call, or text the superintendent about, this is what you're doing, you're purchasing ten new tables. Did we have bids, or is that something that you just got out of the sky? You know, feel free to ask those questions, right? Before you get to the board meeting. Because when you go to the board meeting and you start with all this asking for questions and information, if it's not there in front of you, then it makes everybody look like, okay, we did not do the homework. You did do the homework, if you, you know, prepared for the board meeting, that is part of your board ethics, which is in your board operating procedures. Uh, we do have expectations, you have it in your education code, this is not made up. You can go look at eleven, twenty, fifteen, twelve, and it says, there should be a collaboration between boards and superintendents. Uh, and you have a way of doing it. At the end of the day, you know, you can talk about a lot of stuff, but the board and the superintendent, it's built on trust. You don't have trust, you don't have a relationship that needs to go forward. What are the possible consequences for TA to say, you know what, we need to take over Edgewood, we need to appoint a monitor? Uh, is if they feel that there are issues about academic, financial, or governance issues at the school system. Uh, TA can do everything, including putting a monitor in place, conservator in place, a board of managers in place as well. Has this happened? It just happened, folks, right in your backyard, South San ISD. What? Final investigative report issued in August of twenty twenty-one found that school board members failed to cooperate with the superintendent and acted outside of the authority by contacting district staff to seek information and discuss district business. The report also found that board members demonstrated overreach of their duties by contacting vendors, consultants, and other education organizations on the district's behalf without informing the superintendent. So therefore, following a two-year investigation, they now have an appointed monitor. A lot of people, as the president reported, it doesn't come for free. The monitor is paid by the school district, okay? So if you're gonna be paying a monitor eighty, hundred thousand dollars, those are probably two teachers that you couldn't hire. That's the way I looked at it, as a former classroom teacher. You know, South San has not, this is not the first time at the Romeo. In twenty seventeen, they also had procurement decisions, hiring decisions, and they had also been in trouble as well. So you do not want to be that cynical board, right? That for some reason kind of gets into issues. Um, one of the recommendations that we have had, uh, recently is basically on open meetings. Open meetings is something that is not rocket science. One of the things, and I know that there's a lot of controversy on the attorney general in the state of Texas because of positions that he takes politically, that that's not to undermine or say everything coming out of that office is bad. One of the things that's very good is this open meeting sample. It's there, it's, you know, easy to just digest and see, you know, because at the end of the day, you're here for free. You don't want a criminal or civil lawsuit against you based upon an open meetings act violation. Roberts rules of order is something that is also recommended, that, you know, we go through a little bit. I'm not gonna go over each and every Roberts rules of order, I'm gonna hit the high points. But I wanna first of all say, Roberts rules of order are not the law. They're just a way to conduct either a nonprofit meeting or a meeting of the board, county commissioners, or city council, right? Uh, they are to take into account the rights of the majority and respect the rights of the minority at the same time. So at the end of the day, like we kind of do at home, we don't talk back to our mother unless, you know, if somebody, you know, she has addressed us. And that's kind of, at the end of the day, kind of what Roberts rules of order is. There's a way to talk, but you gotta do it in a procedural fashion. It starts, talks, you know, it starts with raising your hand to acknowledge that, you know what, you wanna say something, you wanna say a motion. The chair recognizes, you make your motion. There is a second to that motion, and then there is discussion, right? After the discussion is, is done, and it has to be obviously relevant to whatever the agenda is, item is, then, when there's no more discussion, at the end of the day, you call for the vote, yes or no. Some people say, well, there's too much discussion going on. If you wanna end the discussion earlier, you can call for the question, right? But you must get two-thirds, five people saying, we need to call for the question. We need to stop this discussion going on. If you have that, then that ends discussion, you go to the vote, uh, right away. Point of order, that's another thing that you can also, some, uh, you know, any board member can do. Point of order is only used, and I wanna make it clear, when a rule has been broken, such as motion, second, no discussion, vote. Uh-uh. Then, Mr. Guerra can say, "Point of order, Ms., uh, Ms. Chairperson, we have not had discussion." Okay. Martha Casilla then rules on whether or not the point of order is well taken or not. Um, it does not require a second, it's just kind of like, just for rules. Point of information, that's another one, that can be used on the Roberts rules of order. But that is with respect to an inquiry as to the facts affecting a, uh, agenda item at hand. That is not to go around what's already in your board operating procedures, that I just kind of go, went over with you, right? You already have board operating procedures, so you're not gonna be able to circumvent the board operating procedures by a point of information. It's, uh, not to give an opportunity to, like it says, the opportunity to ask information that's already been related in your, uh, agenda packets. Call for the question, I'm not gonna go over this, already went over it, right? This is to stop discussion. Um, and if there's a rule that's been broken, a violation, then you go to the board operating procedures and it says, recess, talk to the offending board member about, hey, what you're doing is wrong. And there, and then, you know, that board member can be sanctioned for that. So you don't wanna kind of get there if you just go through the Roberts rules of order, yeah?
We also, like, um, you can choose as Roberts rules, you're not gonna call it a consent agenda. Also, the Roberts rules say that an individual member can remove an item from the consent agenda, but lots of, uh, which, uh, this board is gonna choose.
For the Roberts rules of order, remember, if you have a consent agenda, if a board member wants to request it, then it says that they can't unless you have a rule by the governing vote at the board that says differently. So in your board operating procedures, this force by majority vote has said that if you wanna remove an item on the adj, uh, from the consent agenda, you need a motion and a second. It's not necessarily contravening the Roberts rules of order, because remember the rules of Roberts of order, and it's a little thick book. It does say that it is subject to the rules of whatever company, body, nonprofit, institution is using the Roberts rules of order. Um, you have, but I don't wanna get caught up with the Roberts rules of order to say, we are violating them and that is wrong. You're not, you know, Roberts rules of order are parliamentary procedures. You have a way to amend the motion, and I put in here, you know, do you need a second to amend the motion? Yes, you do. Is it debatable? Yes, it is. Uh, and at the end of the day, if you wanna amend the motion, you need a majority of those that are, you know, that are voting. And the, the, the vote, call for the one, the two-thirds majority. Uh, if you wanna table something, it's just the majority. Um, be very careful with a motion to table, because a motion to table, folks, remember, it says, I move to lay, lay on the table, it's not debatable. Okay? So once, like, if Mr. Guerra says, I move to table, and then James says, I second that, you cannot have discussion about it. You basically go straight to the vote on that. Um, and rescind. If a board member wanted to change a decision that was adopted at a prior meeting, then they would use the motion to rescind. However, if a member wishes to change a decision made during the current meeting, you need to make a motion to reconsider. Okay? There's a little technicalities there. Now, the, the worst thing to frustrate people is to put an item on the agenda over and over and over again. And I've seen that happen with school boards, where they don't have the board operating procedures that you may have here. They put something over and over again on the agenda. You don't wanna do that. Once, you gotta respect the majority of the, the board, right? If they made a decision to purchase ten tables and you wanted twenty tables, it's ten tables for now, okay? Until something changes and maybe there's more money for it. Um, and easy steps, you know, you're recognized, you make the motion, second, the chair takes the motion, the debate on the motion, all those in favor, all opposed, what is the result? Very simple. If you wanna establish the voter presidents, uh, the people don't know this, but you can call the meeting to order, and then right away, somebody says, I'd like to move, make a motion to adjourn. I'd like to go straight to adjournment. I don't wanna deal with any of the ten, fifteen agenda items. That's something that, you know, if it receives second, it has to be acted on first. You know, or recites, it, these are like very, very top-level motions that can be made. Obviously, there, if you make them, you gotta have a reason why you're making them, right? About, you know, actual recommendations, time limits. This is something that South San ISD does, where they give each board member no more than three minutes. And you can Google it, you can put it, you put it on YouTube, they have a little clock. That's it, that's all you get per agenda item. Three minutes to ask questions, to say something, and, you know, if you don't have anything to say, then you don't take the floor. But once you take the floor, then just like we do for public speakers, boom, that little clock is gonna start to run. So, any questions on this? Yes, no, what do you think about this?
What's our current limit?
You don't have any.
Okay.
Right now, you can conceivably be talking to about any agenda item for two hours.
Okay, that's not good.
Yeah. So I think that sometime, and that's why your meetings, at some meetings, maybe that's what's happening at South San, that you're going to one in the morning. Right? Uh, you really don't have that problem, but that is something that, uh, is recommended, right? About limiting your discussion for each agenda item. Three minutes should be, in my opinion, sufficient, but...
Well, most of our stuff's in a consent agenda, so we only rarely have individual items, and you can't really talk about a consent item.
Correct. Yeah, it would be mostly for, you know, your individual items that are, uh, to be acted on.
That's rarely having.
Mm-hmm, yeah. That, that's, yeah, that's a fair statement. In the event that you do though, if you put this into place, then you'll have three minutes per trustee.
So, true, would that mean that you will only have three minutes to address the consent agenda?
Yeah.
So that serves as, as, even though it's multiple items, you have three minutes.
Right.
And then it's all.
It would be just motion, second, discussion, you know, and then?
It's all.
It's all. So.
Per item or?
Per item.
Per item.
Per item.
But it's only on individual. Individual.
Individual.
But the consent agenda is taken as one.
Yeah, but you don't have discussion much on the consent agenda, right? Because it's already, kind of have already been laid out. The only thing that really, on the consent agenda would happen is if somebody wants to remove an item on the agenda, and they get a second, then it's removed, and then that item has this three-minute limit.
What, for example, like when you guys did the rethink redesign, that was an individual item.
Yeah.
Because it was, because it was an item that needed to be acted, acted on individually. Uh, but you guys put in all the work, but also let's not forget about that. You guys put in all the work with Word jobs and everything else you were taking.
Yeah. Any thoughts on this? Yes, no, I mean, it's your board operating procedures. You can go in the direction of South San or just leave it alone. Yes, no, I mean, it's your board operating procedures, you can go in the direction of South Sand or just leave it alone.
Uh, we do have stuff outside of the consent agenda, it's pretty important, and I'm pretty sure for the members should be discussed once in three hours.
Mm-hmm. It does say this, Michael, it says, the board president at his or her discretion makes then the time of time that each trustee is allowed to speak, provided each trustee is allowed an equal amount of time. So there is an avenue for an extension of time.
Maybe.
Hmm? Maybe, yeah, yeah.
I don't, I don't understand what you mean by an item, by discussion of an item outside the consent agenda being important. Like, for example, what would that, what would that be?
First of all.
The school closures.
The what?
School closures. The school closures.
Oh, school closed schools?
That was, that was an item outside the agen- the consent agenda that had discussion.
Yeah.
Stencil.
So, so we just limited this, that also the three minutes? A separate agenda item, like an action item, so to speak?
Yes.
Three per board?
Three board member, unless Martha extends the time, like that's it, for example, James says, I'm not done, can I have two more minutes? Then, everybody else gets five minutes.
It would be a per discretion if discussion is going nowhere, and it was just repetitive and insightful um to to limit that, that that to one, one three minute round.
Well, five board operating procedures, it would, if you adopt this, it would be just three minutes, and you'll be like anybody that goes to public comment. Unless it goes to zero, then you have to stop. Unless you got through, then you ask for two or four minutes, and then everybody gets five minutes down the road. If they.
Should they speak?
Should they wanna speak?
She could end it right there and just say no.
Yeah, if she feels that it's not necessary, then no, you have your three minutes. Uh, Mr. Guerra, do you have anything else to say for three minutes?
I think it's fair.
The way the the how the procedures are right now, can we take something from consent and put it in as its own agenda item?
Yes, but you need a second.
A second, any second voted up.
Any, that's a. Exactly, yeah. Uh, so this is one that is, you know, again, I I have seen it work well. You could, I could, South Sand's not the only one, by the way, that does this. You can Google, there's other school districts that do time limits. So, um, that way your meetings don't go super, super long, so just think about it. Um, adding sessions is something also that's recommended, to meet with a superintendent. I know you all are super busy with your schedules and stuff, and sometimes things can cooperate, and sometimes you're not. But superintendent will be reaching out to you and give you flexible times, maybe at least three, and try to meet if you can, either in person, a Zoom, whatever you can, you know? And uh so that's one that's also recommended. Uh, another recommendation was just adding, which we will have, a constant agenda item in closed session. Discussion regarding board members' duties, roles and responsibilities. Kind of to be kind of a mini planned session, type of like what we're doing here, but behind closed doors. So, and sometimes there might be nothing, and, okay, well, there's nothing, you just go back into open session. But in the event that there are issues that are circulating, you all get them off your chest, through, you know, this agenda item. Not, it's gonna be, doesn't have to be an open session item, it could just be a closed session item. Um, and of course, team building training that you're doing, uh which is recommended, and that's something that some school boards do, some do not. So I'm gonna end my time, and I'm not gonna ask you to write anything, I'm just gonna try to go around. Um, I guess, Martha, you could start off with this. If you are doing something wrong or incorrectly, how would you like to be approached by others?
Um.
Through text or email?
Other board members or?
Yeah, yeah, by other board members.
Okay, that's something that I'm gonna be corrected on, uh I wanna do it in person, and I want them to tell me how to do it.
Okay, yeah, so in person. Sure.
The way I would do it is, I would sit at the podium, I would pull it aside.
Mm-hmm.
You know, not in front of everybody.
Yeah.
I'd pull it aside, this is going on, what can I do?
Yeah.
You know, now, if it continued, maybe it wasn't relevant.
Mm-hmm.
I personally, pull me to the side, if I did or said something that was inappropriate, pull me to the side, just, just happen.
I kinda like that, because a lot of things people are doing now is sending through text, through text message or through emails, and sometimes you mean something that is softer than how it's come approached in, right? Like, pick up the phone, and also remember, folks, everything that you're creating with each other is subject to public information. So, what you're writing out there, if you are okay with it being on the front page of the newspaper, you know, be careful with what you text or what you write out there in emails. Um, right, what do you think? If you're doing something wrong, what would you, how do you wanna be approached? Text, phone call, email, face to face?
Email's fine.
Hey, email's fine?
Yeah, I enjoy it.
Nice one.
I love the emails that I get sent from the board presidents, superintendents, and they tell me I do well.
Okay, so you, you're okay with emails?
Used to be, yeah.
What about verbal communication?
I didn't like last time.
You think it's homework now? No, you don't want that? You'd rather just do it through and write? James, you?
I mean, not that it ever happens, but.
Don't break.
Don't break.
You gotta get taller and higher, right?
Breakfast, lunch or dinner, first of all, and then, I mean, uh I'd rather do it in person, I like meeting in person.
Yeah, face to face?
Yeah, face to face.
Yeah. Um, okay, let's go forward, uh, on another one, question number two. Just, I guess we can begin uh, uh, Roy with you, you know? I think you've known this group long enough, just say two, three things positive about each member, including Dr. Hernandez. Yeah. It could be one word, you know, like Frank. Frank, what would you say good about Frank?
Oh, no.
This starts someone else.
Frank, Frank keeps us honest with numbers.
Good, alright. He knows, yeah, he knows the math, he knows my answers.
James, you know, he he keeps his laugh.
Yeah.
I'm kinda smart a little bit.
He thinks sometimes it's only to be that serious.
Yeah.
It's kinda nice if, you know, it doesn't get too serious. Uh, you know, Richard's always thinking hard, and he's, you know, he comes up with some, you know, interesting and tough questions.
Yes.
Michael, you know, he's, 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 he wants to do really well, and I I admire that. I I just think that he needs to trust the team that he's with. Martha, you know, she cares, she really cares, and she's gonna work hard to do the right thing. Who's over there, don't, don't. You know, uh, Lúbio also, you know, he's one to keep you, keep you honest. You know, he's gonna be very straightforward if he feels that something is not quite as it should be. And and you need some of that, as long as it's not overly respectful, respectful things, and he does that. Ah. This guy really cares.
Yeah.
He really cares, you know, he really wants the district to be well, and 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 you see that, because it affects an emotion. You know, he cares, you have to appreciate that.
With Dr. H?
Uh, he 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 has been uh an incredible find for us. Uh, I I cannot imagine having a a better leader, you know, for for our school district. So he makes it easy, I think he makes it very easy for the board to support him.
Very nice, Mr. Guerra. Oh, you're gonna throw it at me now? Richard, smart, kind of thinker. Uh, James, I I gotta agree with him, he keep it lighthearted, uh but you are smart, you have a good, a good head on your shoulders. There's a good potential in the future. Uh, Roy. He has a wisdom about him that uh he's brought to the board and had a lot, a lot of, given a lot to the board. Frank, the businessman, the numbers guy, I mean, I, he, there's not much else you can say, he's good at barbecue too. Yeah. Michael, he's a smart young man, he's really intelligent. He has the skills, he just needs to hone it. Yeah. Martha, it's, I gotta agree, she's, she's the one, she really cares, she cares a lot. It's, it's seen in what she's do, in what she does, inside and outside of the board. And Louis, he's a hard ass Marine. And Dr. Gomez, he, I mean, Dr. Gomez, Dr. Hernandez. He's, he's, he's.
He's smart to the nits, though.
Dr. Hernandez, you know, we've had so many superintendents, so many bad superintendents. And I've seen good ones, but not, not as good as him. And uh, he's, he has been the one that has led this district into a change that has, it has never seen in its entire existence. This district has been a micromanaged district for decades, and it's not that anymore. Martha?
Um, okay, Mr. Guerra is our history guy, he will advise us what could possibly happen or whatever, but he goes with the group. He he lets us decide, and, and like everyone has said, he does care about the district. Uh, and he definitely does not wanna go back where we were as the rest of us come. Uh, Richard, I can have conversations with Richard, he's a very smart guy, about different subjects and all that, but when it comes to talking about the kids, uh, he's dedicated, and especially those that do not have an opportunity to finish school. Uh, he really is very strong about giving them an opportunity. James, I think James, we witnessed how dedicated he is with his goals and all that, he's been dedicated to the district. He understands what it, what's going on, and I admired him because, um, I don't know, he was looking for support, but we gave it to him, and he worked really hard to accomplish his goal of becoming a doctor, PhD. So that, to me, says a lot, that he won't give up easily with our kids.
Yeah.
Uh, Roy, thank God that it was Roy and not me, so that was the first president, because this guy, he was his business, um, knowledge, and uh, he was able to confront all that had to be cleaned up. Consequently, that, that's what it was, that he cleaned it up, and then those of us who were fortunate enough to just come in and do the work, carry it on. Uh, Frank, Frank is very dedicated to the kids, I mean, he feels for everybody, he feels for the kids, he feels for the families, he feels for this. And, but then he also saves us with knowing the numbers, 'cause he does present something that doesn't make sense. And and that's what we all are with our, with whatever experience we've had in life, or whatever jobs we, you know, we have skills. So we contribute that so that the rest of us can think about things that we might be having a a blind spot, because we're not knowledgeable about that. Mr. Gomez is very dedicated, Mr. Gomez uh likes things very clearly explained. He doesn't want assumptions, he doesn't wanna be made a fool or tricked or anything like that. So we make sure that everything is is shared with him, because then he is really a trooper, he's out there, he gets in the front and starts pushing to accomplish our goal. And, that's it, right? Just Michael, Michael. Michael, 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 you've been here a year, and I wish I could say more about you. I'm the kind of person who gets to meet people and all that, but um, twenty twenty three didn't give us that opportunity. But next time I'm asked, I wish I could say a lot more about you. The only thing that I know is that you graduated from our district, that you're dedicated, and you wanna help find arts. But from there on, uh, there's a lot of things that I don't understand, and I wish I I I would, and I will reach out to you to be able to close that gap and figure that bear, and have all the confidentiality so that you can trust, starting with me, I'll do that.
Mr. Sanz?
I mean, I'm gonna be more general, everyone brings their own experience and expertise to the table. Um, when we gather, um, everyone is diverse, has different opinions, um, on whoever it is we're talking about. But the, but the commonality we have is that we're all looked at with people, and that, and that, that means a lot to me.
It would prompt. Michael?
I'll go last.
Okay, Frank?
One hundred and twenty seven. Yeah, we care, we care, we're, you know, we're careless, you know, we're, we're positive, we're humble, we're careless. Um, we, we have a great superintendent, I don't know if we, if we use that, even though I'm six years now with this stuff.
Yeah.
I've learned patience, so I'm proud of myself for, I've learned patience here.
James?
Same question?
Yeah.
What did you say about me, Richard?
Two seconds.
Alright, let's see here. Uh, Frank?
Yeah, I mean, the numbers, I always trust him with numbers, um, just knowing that if he says it's not a big deal, like, that it's not a big deal. I don't know, just, you know, when he says it's, you know, hey, this, the bigger picture, this might seem like a lot of money, but it's really not, like, this is kinda just normal, everyday things, I guess, 'cause he's used to big numbers like that, and I wasn't when I started.
James?
And, so yeah, I don't know, I guess just perspective, that like, just kinda don't get stuck on the the little things, the little costs. Um, Roy, um, I mean, there's just so much, no, um, I guess he's always been like the stable person for us, the calm, calm one, collected. Sometimes I get frustrated how calm he is sometimes, because I feel like he should be more. Because I, I guess I had to split, like, just because he's not getting emotional doesn't mean he doesn't care. Um, but I think that's a skill that I've, ever since I've been on, tried to kind of develop, that, you know, don't let, um, don't let people get the best of you, I guess, you know, don't let them frustrate you or make you say something stupid or do something stupid, just kind of let people say what they're gonna say, and, you know, do, do what you want, you know, do what you're gonna do anyway. Um, go this way, and Michael, um, I, I, I would not have, I don't think, I, I think I'd be in the same situation if I started right out of high school. I mean, um, you know, having, you know, the, I guess the courage to be in a public office, um, is is difficult, right? Or or is, um, is difficult to do that, but then also realizing that, um, you know, there, there is, um, how should I say, there is, when you, when you're around people that like have worked on like the board or in professional environments, I think it can seem daunting, um, and I think he, he hasn't given up, he's still kinda finding his own way, his own, you know, style of leadership and things like that. So, uh, you know, I commend him for that, 'cause at that age, I was not worried about public office or, I was about other things.
It's true.
And, and, and I, I think that's, that's a really big responsibility to take. Um, Martha, um, same way, I've been kind of, you know, just like Roy, I've been kind of following in their footsteps, finding the ways that they've handled situations and, and, you know, um, you know, just kinda really learn like the logistical parts, but also that like she actually does care about each and every one of the, the board members and and Dr. Hernandez. Um, and, you know, I've just been kind of, um, just trying to emulate that as best as I can, because like, it's just natural for Martha to care, for me, I have, feel like I have to like make myself care, because I know it's right, but at the same time, it's still difficult for me, but I just like how natural it is that she cares. And then, Mr. Gomez, um, I just like that I, he, he's always forward, he's always, I never have to decipher what he's saying, he just tells you exactly what it is, and I appreciate that, um, because not everyone can do that, like, in a, and you feel, and I feel good afterwards.
Yeah.
Like, when he tells me something serious directly, I'm like, okay, like, I get it, I'm not angry or or. Like when he tells me something serious directly, I'm like, okay, like, I get it, I'm not angry or, or, you know, feeling a certain way. Um, I think that's a skill that he's worked on for a long time. And then Joe, yeah, like, he's a historian, like, I, I, I enjoy hearing some of the experiences that, that he's seen and that he's saying, no, let's not go back to that, let's not, um, uh, let's not take a step backwards, like, I think he keeps us moving forward, you know, let's keep moving forward, let's not get sidetracked in. Oh, I didn't forget Dr., oh, actually, Richard and then I forgot Dr. Richard, um, man, at first, I didn't know about Richard. I feel, I thought, you know, he didn't like me or, or, I don't know, I thought I felt a certain way about him or about me. But, um, I just like that he just, you know, he, he, he talks about things that are relevant, like, I don't think he likes to waste time talking about frivolous things or ideas. Like, you know, I know that whenever Richard's gonna say something, it's, it's, it's relevant, it's always relevant, it's always important.
To the point.
Yeah, to the point. And then Dr. Hernandez, um, I mean, other than having the same last name, I mean, I really, um, maybe one day, um, you know, I, even though I don't really see like the, the daily things that you do, um, I, I, I look more at the outcomes, like, you know, you give us the outcomes, how things are going. But I really appreciate your openness, um, and your, your transparency with everything you're doing, um, your flaws, your mistakes. But I think you're also, you know, you're not afraid to also share your successes and your, you know, your trials. But I really like that, he's real balancing that way. And so, and me, no, that's it, no, that's it, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go with Richard. In general, I'm, I'm a dive person, but I get through all my history of the city and military and all that, I listen.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, I try, when I listen, when James and Richard be, you hear what they say. You know, because they're not just, well, I got better word, blowing smoke, but, you know, supermarket. Joe and I, we go back, we were working at the element for the windows.
Wow.
So, I, I, we've been, we've seen the words and we were involved with the words.
Yeah.
Every night. So, you know, I, I listen, I, I listen to, I don't even call for, for advice, that even though it's a few months older than I am. Frank, you know, what did you say about Frank? I, I, pisses me off that he's so mellow. Don't leave back, you know, but that somebody you want in your corner.
Yeah.
He's gonna be there. Martha, she's a mother, bro, she's, she's got this motherly instinct going for her, you know? She worries, you know, I, I just, you listen to her and she's, she'll, she'll tell you, she'll tell you what you're thinking. Roy? I don't know, we drink to the beer.
It's what it is.
I was talking. Roy brings a wisdom of how good it can be, how it should have been. Yeah, for a boy. So we, I'm gonna add each here. You know, it's like they said, he's in the background, but he watches.
Yeah.
You, you pull your side and tell, hey, maybe this should be.
Could equalize it.
Dr. H brings so much to the team. And not only does he, does he work hard, worries about staff, but he worries about everybody personally. You know, I, I've had him call me, maybe just to see how we're doing. You know, that, 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 that means a lot.
Yeah.
So when you work with somebody that, that you know has compassion and is gonna listen to you when you talk, that makes it easier for all of us.
Well, because I think the other day I'm not close with this, that it basically hit that trust between that board and the superintendent that is fostered by doing things that necessarily all professionally, you know, although obviously that's his main job duty, right? Academic success. But if you have this good personal relationship, you're able to connect in a much deeper fashion and able to say, this is somebody because there's gonna be errors at H one I S D along the way, you know, and sometimes the blank hits the fan and you don't expect it. But when you have that trust, you're able to say, okay, this is the way we're gonna get through it together, so. Thank you, folks, this is my time, alright?
Well, I wanna add something.
Can we say something about Martha? I didn't say anything about Martha.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, the reason I bring it up is I, I do wanna say something. You know, we, we were in a very bad place. Andrew was very, very vocal when, when the board, you know, the board of managers came, you know, were asked to come in. And we were clueless and, and, and we had two individuals that were really instrumental, three, three, that were really instrumental in helping us. And that was so bad, it's because, you know, he came in with a lot of tough love, he was hard on us. And, and, and we were told that that was gonna be the deal, we had to accept it and he was tough. And, 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 and for goodness sake. You know, we, we were really messed around, like a previous law. And, and there was so much, you know, money that didn't make, uh, didn't make any sense. Uh, and they had been there for a long, long time and they thought they rendered this for. And so we had to go to the radar.
Yeah.
To, to find someone because, because we didn't think we could trust anyone because we just didn't know. And, and, and I'm so grateful that you were available, uh, because, you know, uh, your presentation to us and, and, you know, uh, you know, it was so different and it was, it was somebody that, you know, kinda had a simpler approach, but it was, it was an honest approach. And, and I think you've done incredible things for us, early on, we were totally clueless.
Thank you.
You kept us in check. I had the other attorneys in my face, you know, before they left.
Is that you? Who would be mad at you? You didn't, you know, you didn't, yeah.
But anyway, thank you so much, Juan.
Thank you.
You made an incredible impact.
Well, I'm privileged to be part of the team, so, thank you to everybody.
Mr. Gomez, Mr. Gomez, you forgot to give us your.
We joined the chair.
Okay, guys, so. Alright, guys, that, that is, oh, we still need to hold out because this is a meeting. Okay, so all four.
Motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Oh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
Mr. Galra, who, Mr. Dr. Hernandez, second, any, uh? Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, say nay. Motion passes, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.